I'd like to begin by acknowledging Premier Vargas and Dr. Henry for the outstanding job they've done taking care of all British Columbians, including our 6,000 hockey players, countless coaches, referees, managers, and volunteers.
What?
There's been lots of talk of the new normal in relation to COVID-19 and the coronavirus. I wanted to tell you that this call represents the new normal for hockey in B.C. and the Yukon. All levels of our game are now and will continue working to build the game together. As you know, we have and will continue making serious and significant changes at B.C. Hockey. These changes were coming long before the virus hit. I am looking forward to talking to you more about the changes we're making, and we will do that in a special meeting next Wednesday. Today, we need to talk about how to get back to play and do it so we come flying out of the gates. Here to help us is every member of the senior leadership of Hockey Canada, and they are here at B.C. Hockey's invitation to speak to all the districts and hockey associations from across their great province.
First of all, Bill, thanks for the invitation. Jeremy, Jen, very much appreciated. I know these are obviously extremely difficult times, but with that being said, certainly within all of this, and I'm sure you've heard enough of this cliche, there is opportunity there, to say the least. But this is extraordinary times, and as a former provincial project coordinator of B.C. Amateur Hockey, now B.C. Hockey, I have in my mind's eye at least a pretty good view of every community in British Columbia, thanks to the Dairyland Jamboree back in the day, and certainly have fond memories, and we'll get back to those. I can promise you that. The one thing I can also promise you, as Bill alluded to, is this new normal. The big thing for us, our obligation to the new normal is to normalize things in sort of a generic way and not try to force feed ourselves the game moving forward. With that being said, I also think it's not really a time to be too nostalgic. As much as nostalgia is a wonderful emotion, I think one of the things we have to recognize is that we've got to prepare ourselves as best we possibly can to be better. We have to prepare ourselves as best we possibly can to collaborate, to corroborate, to recognize process, to recognize patience, to recognize that you have a provincial health authority who has done an outstanding job, I think, in delivering on behalf of all the citizens in B.C. an extremely poignant message on how to continue and move forward. This is not a race to get anywhere first. It's a race to do things right, and there can be a very, very big difference. So I encourage you to maintain an open mind, to be patient, to share a singleness of purpose with your participants. Every one of them, including grandmas and grandpas and parents in the stands, have to recognize that we do need to understand the value of a process and do take our time to do the right thing. Bill, you alluded to this initiative as being certainly a new normal, and I would agree with you. I would also recognize that B.C. Hockey, as its history would suggest, has always been a leader in this country when it comes to the delivery of hockey. And I really appreciate the opportunity to jump on this type of a call, Bill, and I can tell you that it'll probably happen 12 more times across the country with the same participants, and I'm hoping that the delivery is as effective as this should be today, especially when you look at what we're able to share with you once I'm done. You know, if you remember, a couple of years ago, Humboldt really kicked us in the backside, you know, and really got our attention on what can happen in a moment's notice and how best to deal with that in the most serious of situations and under the most duress you can possibly imagine. Who could have thought it could have gotten anything any worse, and I'm not so sure that it has. But having said that, it really forced Hockey Canada to be nimble, to put in place a crisis management team and a process therein that helped us deal with every moment of every day which continues to this point in time. The crisis management team was certainly a brainchild of Glenn McCurdy and Todd Jackson, as well as our board of directors led by Michael, and it's proven itself to be very, very important, and Scott will allude to that a little bit as well, but it's been really critical to us in how we've dealt with every single day. The whole idea behind the crisis management team was to deal with what really started off with the cancellation of the Women's World Championship based on the authorities in New Brunswick recognizing, the health authorities that is, recognizing that first and foremost, and we all believe in this, the safe and health of our participants, of our population is paramount and first and foremost on our minds. And so when we canceled the Women's World Championship and subsequent to that canceled the hockey season, these were certainly groundbreaking decisions, but they were not made on a whim. They were made with a very systematic approach in garnering the right detail, the right information, so we could make an informed decision, and I can tell you that that process continues to this day on a daily basis. I have to tell you that the development of the Member Engagement Department at Hockey Canada and with our member branches and the likes of Jeremy and Jen and previous to that Barry, along with their counterparts across the country, have developed an incredible relationship based on trust, based on communication, based on being honest and brutally honest when it's required, but always based on the single objective of making everything we do mean more to the participant. And the Member Engagement Team, and I think Keegan, you might have mentioned Darren Cossa earlier, has been very, very important to us. And with all of that said, what we did from the 12th of March on is we've done every day is meet. We've met as an executive leadership team at Hockey Canada. We've met with our department heads at Hockey Canada. Three times a week, we met with our member branches through the executive directors and when we can and by invitation of the branch presidents, and we've done everything we possibly can to be open and transparent and in full view, recognize and deal with every situation as it comes about. I'm proud of the fact that a Scott Furman, for example, has made the connection he has with B.C. Hockey, and I'm also proud of the fact that we will handle with what's in front of us extremely well as long as we pay attention to what has to happen and do that again from a common front, from a position of unanimity, if you will. I think it's also really important to recognize, and Scott will get into this for you with a little bit more detail, as much as everything is of paramount importance, the return to play is absolutely huge. And we know that everyone has an eye to when to come back and a desire to come back, not necessarily a date to come back to the game. What we have to do is make sure that our return to play follows guidelines, follows basic principles and protocols, regardless of where and when you start. B.C., for example, could have seven different regions or districts starting at seven different times. What's most important is that we follow a particular protocol and procedures that protect the integrity of the participant and the integrity of our game in British Columbia. And with that being said, I'm truly hopeful and I truly believe that in B.C., we'll do the right thing. We'll continue to do the right thing. You'll continue to lead the country in how to do the right thing by the nature of following due process and recognizing the common denominator in all of this is trust. And it's not a race to get someone on the ice first. It's a race to be the best at getting the people on the ice at the right time. And with that being said, and I look forward to your questions later, I'll throw to Scotty and ask Scott to fill us in on return to play and other aspects of what he can help us with.
Thanks, Tom. Just do the sound check. Can people hear me?
Yes, we can, Scott.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we get a chance to connect with Michael, our chairman of the board, and technology's a little bit on our side there. As Tom mentioned, you know, we talk to Michael at least once a week on a formal basis and multiple times informally and talk to our board once a week, so I think what we would relay here would probably be introduced by Michael if he had a chance to speak. First and foremost, Bill, to you and the entire B.C. Hockey membership, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today and share some thoughts that we've been dealing with on managing our way through this, but also getting our eyes and ears focused on return to play. I also want to extend a message of appreciation to all of the volunteers who deliver hockey opportunity to the membership within B.C. The work that you do on an annual basis is extraordinary, and in these challenging times, it's even more extraordinary. And please know that Hockey Canada very much appreciates it. I've started many emails, most emails, and I've started every conference call I've had by saying, "I hope everyone's safe and well," and I always caution myself because I say it so repeatedly, but with every day that passes within this situation, the magnitude of what those two words mean grows every day. So hopefully, all of you and all of those around you are both safe and well. In August, I will start, I believe, my 30th year working in the hockey system. And I've said to people on many occasions, like I've had 30 years of employment where in the sport of hockey, where there's so much certainty. The schedule starts in the fall, minor hockey associations get active, teams get organized, leagues get organized, et cetera, et cetera, and there's very much a routine-ness to our annual calendar. Never have I been in a situation, I'm sure you feel the same way, in a time of more uncertainty, and that creates challenges for us. Our intent is to tell you about the work we're doing and how we're planning. The challenge is we can't tell you when those plans are going to start, but please know that we're attempting to be as organized as possible for the entire hockey system so we can return to play when it is safe for the participants. By all indication, it appears that return to play will be dictated by numbers. And what I mean by that, we continually listen to the provincial and relevant health authorities across the country. And when people talk or when those organizations and provinces talk about lifting some of the restrictions on social gatherings, they go from a smaller number to a little bit larger number, and the expectation is that the number of people that are permitted to gather will probably be part of our decision-making on Learn to Play. We've been very, very focused as a hockey organization, as Tom mentioned, when we canceled the Women's Worlds, the provincial health authority in Nova Scotia gave us direction on that. When we canceled the entire hockey season on March the 12th, effective March the 13th, we used the medical advice of our chief medical officer, Dr. Mark Obrey, and we looked at--
A Canada conference call.
We looked at the situation in each of the provinces and took direction from the provincial health authorities, and that definitely will be the protocol that we use for return to play. It is also very likely that it won't be a consistent date or a consistent number across the country, and there's potential, I think actually it does exist already, for inconsistencies within your province. And we're going to have to manage our way through that. We've constantly talked in our planning process with our members that we're going to need to be very flexible, and most importantly, we're going to need to listen to families and really understand what they expect from us in delivering hockey at the local, provincial, and national level. Our two most urgent priority task teams on return to play are-- the first one is around regulations, probably more focused at the higher level of competition, but regulations that we will need to factor into and likely be more flexible on to allow different dates of return to play and different structure on return to play. The second is the health and safety protocols that we will need to first use to make the decision and ensure that young people who are participating in the game are returning to a safe environment and do that in a structured way. And then once we're back in regular business or something close to regular business, how are we making sure that we have the appropriate health and safety considerations in place, sanitation, et cetera, to make sure that we're delivering a safe and positive environment for the participants? Both of those task teams were actioned over the last week, and there's a group of people working on both of those on an urgent basis and making sure that we have clear set guidelines and some flexibility with respect to our regulations when we are ready to return to the ice. We're also taking this time to review our coaching and officiating certification programs. The first task in the review is the delivery of coaching and officiating certification in a virtual environment and making sure that we have that available to our members come the latter part of June when they're ready to advance on their plans in both of those areas. We're also recognizing there's a number of very qualified people in both of those domains, both coaches and officials that are available to us right now, are interested in utilizing this time to contribute to the game, and we're looking at how we would refresh, reformat, and revise our coaching and officiating content on a long-term basis. We have a number of different work groups that are starting to-- we're starting to put together. First and foremost, it's on customer or family engagement. We plan to do a national survey of minor hockey association leaders like yourselves, leaders from our branches, families and participants in the game from across the country to make sure that we understand what their feelings are about registration, what their desire is on return to the game, and most importantly, what can we be doing as a national organization with our provincial members to deliver a better experience for their children and the families across this country. We've got a marketing and public relations group, work group, that will start and really trying to make sure that we're positioning hockey in a very positive light. Obviously, we think it will be very valuable as families look to maintain a level of physical activity and also will contribute to the overall positive mental health for Canadians across the country. We recognize that in some cases, because numbers will impact our return to play decisions, we've got a development group looking at a menu of activities/programs that minor hockey associations as well as our members will be able to use that might allow smaller groups, actually smaller than teams, return to the ice. Our intention is to not prescribe that. Our intention is to draft out and have detailed information on a menu basis, and minor hockey association leaders and team leaders will be able to utilize that information to allow kids to get back into the game, but only when the appropriate health authority tells us that we're ready to do so. We have a work group looking at our national championships and various events and decision-making in and around how we would look at that. As people would know, we've canceled our national championships that were to be held in April and May. We have a group, we have three championships that are scheduled for the fall, and we were working through a formal decision-making process as to how we would consider those if we get further into this process. We also have-- we are in the process of adjusting the format to our national camps and development events in the summer months. We still recognize there's value in the long-term training of our development leaders, so we're looking at a method similar to this through a virtual format and staying connected with skill development leaders and hockey development leaders across the country through our members. We recognize the need to stay connected to the players in our national team program and the program of excellence, both male and female, and we're working through an alternative approach to stay connected with some, obviously, some off-ice sessions and some inspiration sharing with those athletes who otherwise would have been in our women's development camp or under-18 camp in August, our national under-17 camp or national junior camp, and our national under-18 camps in July and August. So we're looking at virtual options there to stay connected. We also want to make sure that we're very mindful and aware of private hockey and want to make sure that we're structuring things in such a way that we're not giving a non-sanctioned program across in some parts of the country an opportunity to get back in business where we are holding back what we call our system or the traditional system. I think that probably in a lot of cases will take care of itself because we will take the direction from the provincial health authorities, but we've got a group that's very cognizant of the competitive nature of some private hockey programs that operate in parallel to minor hockey, and we want to make sure that our membership is looked after and considered through that. We've been asked through our Member Engagement Team and discussions with our members across the country when we might be able to make any type of reference to any type of date of return to play. Unfortunately, that falls in the uncertain category. We're going to continue our efforts to be very well organized. We're going to continue our efforts to be prepared. We've used the phrase repeatedly that, you know, "When Canada's ready, Hockey Canada will be ready." And we will be making a public statement likely around the 15th of May, just in general terms, to let the Canadian public know that we are working on a fairly robust and significant return to play program for our membership across the country. It will not have any specific dates to it, but we feel the need, just like we are today, to let the leaders of hockey at the community level know that there's a significant amount of work going in to making sure that we're doing everything we can to help you and, most importantly, the families return to the ice when the public health authorities tell us it's safe to do so. Really appreciate everyone's patience in these times of uncertainty. Again, I want to thank Bill for the opportunity to participate today, and most importantly, I want to thank everyone on the call for the volunteer that they work on a day-to-day basis, and we recognize that that's even more challenging in times like this. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks very much, Scott and Tom. I believe Michael's available now on the phone.
Yeah, Bill, what I'm going to do is just so everyone's forewarned, because Michael is on a phone, I'm going to unmute everyone, so please either keep it down or mute yourself so we can give Michael Brendon more the floor.
Okay, thank you, Keegan. So you're going to stay up?
Go ahead, Michael.
I'll wait until the sound disturbance is gone. Be with you today, along with our CEO. Look, Keegan, I'll wait a few moments if you wish.
Please mute yourself and leave the floor.
If we can get people to mute their telephones as well, I think that'll help things.
Seems to be better now, Bill? Yeah, okay.
Good, Michael, give it a try.
Okay, another try. Let's go. So, good afternoon, B.C. Hockey volunteers and hockey staff resources also. I really appreciate receiving your president, Bill Green,'s invitation to be with you today, along with our CEO, Tom, that you all know, and our C from President of Operations, Scott, who just delivered a fantastic account of the operations that are going on. I don't want to minimize Tom's effort either. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Scott. Although we meet under these cloudy circumstances dictated by this pandemic, I am proud to see how involved you are. Hockey lives with your volunteerism and dedication, and these are not just words. This is reality. We have been severely body-checked and shaken by an unknown player named COVID, but we are getting up and we are planning different return-to-play scenarios incorporating the safety requirements eventually mandated by each provincial public health institution, as Scott alluded to. Over the past two months already, the Hockey Canada Board of Directors, like yourselves, faced an unprecedented sequence of the most unusual circumstances, canceling our activities one after the other as they come for public health reasons. We don't volunteer for that, but like yourselves, we do have duties and responsibilities as board directors. Risk management in this set of circumstances is the one. It's the most important responsibility that we be preoccupied by the safety of our participants because we are in the business of organizing people and consequently taking care of people. A word about my colleagues, the Board of Directors, all volunteer people. In these times, they are very diligent, calm, studious, open-minded, asking for the adequate information, receiving good guidance, deliberating, and deciding. They are dedicated and responsible in these unparalleled adverse conditions. Decision-making in these circumstances also takes into account the landscape as it evolves. We acknowledge that the requirements of the provincial public health authorities are binding for all the reasons that you know and understand, so I encourage you, please listen to them. A few examples that might give you a little bit of like on questions, items that need our attention and are aligned with our responsibilities as risk management goes. So we ask ourselves at different moments, what about our participants' interests and those of our volunteers all over the country? What about our parents? What about our members, the provinces, the branches? How can we respond to the severity of this situation at its inception and as we go along? What about the staffing capacity? What about the work being done by our task teams, other groups, and committees to advance our projects as they were not so long ago? The viability of our programs and services, the forecasting of the stability of our revenues, what's happening with our sponsors, the business continuity plans that I say in an uncertain environment by medical standards? What are our members' concerns and what can we do for them? What about registration next year? What are the areas of our strategic plan that can be maintained? Do we still have DNO insurances? The answer is yes, et cetera. So as you can see, we are concerned with the proper crisis response and activity resumption, however it looks like, as Scott talked about. I want to say a word also about communications in these troubled times. It is important that you voice your expectations and also that you envision how your expectations can be satisfied, be it locally, regionally, provincially, or nationally. If the team worked, let's talk about it. Let's stay connected. What is your plan in communications? Does your plan need a change to be better? Give your board members regular information and briefings. Continue to take care of your participants and their parents. Try to maintain engagement and good complicity with parents and kids via good communication. We fully appreciate at the board level the consequences of our decisions for our youth and the parents. The directors of the Hockey Canada Board have families too and are aware that having to interrupt the hockey season creates a great deception at the time the decision was made. As weeks go by, I am sure you can evaluate that it was the only decision we could take. It might be a cliche, but it is true that while we are not operating the way we used to, we do have time to take a look at how to do what we are supposed to do and when we have time to do it. As for example, do we have adequate organizational bylaws? Do we remember having difficulties to decide on situation by reason of lacking the appropriate tools like regulations or policies? Can we make the most out of this situation and maybe offer in a way that respects different ways the player, customer? It's a good time to work on things we didn't have time to do so when we are operating regularly. And I know what I'm talking about, and I can put myself in your shoes as I once was a minor hockey president as well as a regional and provincial president. So things that you are going through, although it's a one-timer for all of us, the usual day-to-day activities in hockey, I understand, and I know the challenges that you might have at this moment. I know that we are uncertain and that we have worries, and that's why we have conference calls and we have communications. Finally, I sincerely thank you for your active and interested involvement in hockey. Without you, hockey in this province and in this country would not look the same. I understand that the present COVID era has difficulties that you have and that those that you can foresee. It's the same thing at our level. Personally, I think that we can come back better if we wish to. Personally, I think that we can come back better if we wish to, for the benefit of our kids. We love our kids, we love hockey. Can we continue making it the perfect match? I do think so. I thank you again for your patience. Let's stay positive and resilient. And a word on Tom and Scott, we have, as they said, regular weekly communications, and the same with the Board of Directors. And the level of trust between us is excellent, which itself triggers positive work. So I encourage you to uh aspire or to do the same thing if uh you're not there yet. And uh do not hesitate to forward your suggestions and to demonstrate your interest. So thank you, BC Hockey. Thank you, Bill, for the invitation.
Uh thanks very much, Michael. Appreciate your uh, your oversight on, on all of this and uh again, thank you so much on behalf of uh BC Hockey for joining us this morning.
Good. Thank you very much, Michael. Thank you, Bill. Um we are continuing to monitor those questions in the chat function. We will get to some of those after our next agenda item, which is an update on COVID-19 from a national perspective. So I want to introduce Hockey Canada's Director of Insurance and Risk Management, Todd Ja- Todd Jackson. Todd?
Thank you, and uh just do a sound check as well. Everybody can hear me okay?
You're good, Todd.
Thank you. Um good afternoon, everyone, and, and I, I want to echo a thank you to Bill and to uh, to the BC membership. I, I, I think this is fantastic. Uh the communication avenue is so, so important as we are in these uh, these unprecedented times, as we've heard so many times uh over the last two months. Uh I just want to uh give you an idea this afternoon as, as to what we're doing from a monitoring standpoint. Uh the, things are, are, are changing, as you know. Uh if not hourly, they're changing daily, they're changing weekly, and, and we constantly get new information and, and that new information becomes so, so important as we move forward. We um, we continue to have very important communication with our chief medical officer, uh Dr. Mark O'Bri, who was mentioned earlier. Uh Dr. O'Bri has been excellent for us and, and certainly uh I know that uh the Dr. Henry has been excellent for the province as well in BC. And, and those are the people that are really the, the pillars with respect to having their ear to the ground and coming out with, with very solid and, and, and very, very informative uh information on a, on a daily basis. A key element will be for us to consider the fact, and I, I think this was said earlier, that, that our provinces, our territories, our municipalities, uh will begin to open slowly and, and we're starting to see some of that. Uh and, and they'll do so at different paces, and that's, that's going to be part of the overall risk management um picture that we're going to have to look at as we move forward. And, and again, we've continued to do that and will continue to do that as we move into the next phase um of the crisis. As far as the situation in Canada, and I, I won't go too deeply into this because I know it's, it's something you see on an ongoing basis. Uh as of this morning, Canada was at about 62,000 cases and, and about 4,000 deaths and, and about 27,000 recoveries. Uh BC sad that just over 2,000 cases, 121 deaths and, and just over 1,400 recoveries. And, and I think what we're seeing is we're starting to see that line, if you will, flatten, which means we're starting to see uh the cases progress even slower on an ongoing basis, which is a, a positive, positive thing we have to remember. Uh the Public Health Agency of Canada website, which is one that we monitor on an ongoing basis, continues to say that the, that the uh uh the risk to Canadians right now is high and will continue to be high. Uh but we will see that drop if we continue with uh obviously the, the, the um prevention steps that everyone is taking and everyone is, is being so cooperative on uh as we move forward. Uh the latest uh COVID-19 modeling has been very positive. Um and, but as Tom said earlier, as, as Scott was saying, we very much have to work under the advice of the, of the provincial health bodies. We very much have to work, work, uh work under the advice of the information we're getting from our, from our municipal health bodies as well. So important because we want to continue to uh, to flatten that line, if you will, to reduce the number of cases that are happening across the country. As far as BC specifically, um they have an excellent website. If you haven't been on there, uh they have situation reports that come out every day. Uh the one this morning was again very positive. The number of reported cases has decreased uh in BC the last few days. Uh locally, um there, I think the cases that are happening are linked to clusters uh within the province. Uh but I think we may see BC start to announce some type of reopening plan today. That is the uh information that we got this morning uh off the news, but, but uh we will see what happens as the day progresses uh uh in BC. Many of the provinces are now, as you know, announcing gradual reopening models. Federal provincial and territorial governments have agreed uh that in advance of any area looking at a, at a reopening model, they really need to sit down, they need to demonstrate the fact they have the ability to contain the transmission uh to a level where the health system can manage the number of cases that are happening. Uh they have to have enough capacity to test and to, and to isolate Kate the virus. Um so when example, someone tests positive, um it's a quick notification and people know that that's happened and that all helps to control. Uh that there are additional uh protections in place for vulnerable groups. So we know the story behind long-term care. Uh we know the concerns, we know uh the other vulnerable uh parts of the population very much have to be able to, to protect that vulnerable part of the population. Uh before we go back to work, workplace protocols have to be in place and we have to be able to monitor and to prevent the spread of COVID in the, in the work environment. And I, and I think we, we need to make sure that we're there before we step forward. And, and, and the comment was, was made earlier, it's not being fast, it's making sure that we're being very, very prudent and we're being very careful with, with the uh steps we, we uh put into place as we move forward. The easing of, of restrictions uh on travel, travel is, is a big one right now uh with respect to both provincial borders and obviously international borders. Uh but that, that is also going to affect how we look at remodeling, how we look at the new game, how we look at it go-forward. And we, and we don't know yet what that's all going to look like, but we do know that we have to continue to monitor that. We have to continue to make sure we've got the right information as we move into our return-to-play um uh framework. And communities have to be able to manage localized outbreaks as well, but if we can keep the cases low, uh we'll be able to do that. In reviewing all the remodeling plans across the country and, and certainly uh I'll, I'll say that the provinces are, are almost there and we may hear from BC today, we're seeing common themes with respect to those. They're very gradual in nature, first of all. Uh they have similar openings in different levels and phases in many of them, so we're seeing a very, very uh very slow start to the openings and that will gradually get more and more. And we're also seeing that things like sport and recreation, uh mass gatherings, uh festivals, concerts, those types of things are further down the line. So we need to uh prepare, we need to make sure we're ready. Uh at the same time, we have to follow the direction of the, of the provincial, the municipal uh health authorities uh as we move forward, but we need to be ready as we do that. And, and certainly Hockey Canada is uh in the process of getting ready and, and certainly Scott uh talked uh in, in depth on that. I, I will tell you that from a, from a risk management standpoint, uh as we monitor the crisis, we're assessing the risks associated with, with return to play using the most up-to-date information. And once play resumes, however that's going to look, uh we're going to mitigate the risks uh with COVID in the sporting environment to the, to the, to the best we can. Uh the safety, health of players, volunteers, administrators, parents and families are all paramount. Uh we have to take a lot of things into consideration. We have to consider facility guidelines, uh that local rink and, and the different guidelines that it must put in place and that it's going to need to have cooperation uh with the, with the Minor Hockey Association, with the league uh in order to, to put those in place. We frame what the game will look like as we follow provincial and municipal health guidelines around things like social distancing, mass gatherings, uh personal hygiene, travel. All those things are going to be considered as we build a return-to-play plan as we move forward. And, and uh there's going to be more of those. There's going to be more restrictions that are lifted, but at the same time, there's going to be uh different steps around those restrictions to ensure the lifting of the restrictions is done in a very safe way, and, and we'll continue to monitor that and make sure we're taking those into uh, into consideration. We need to outline steps specific to team hygiene, and it was talked about earlier, uh not only at the rink, but it's, it's traveling to and from the rink, uh it's, it's that team meeting, it's, it's all the things that we do as organizations uh in order to deliver the game. And we've got to make sure that we've got the, the, the hygiene part of it uh in place and ready to go when, when the time comes. Providing information on travel restrictions and, and uh how the game is going to look is very much going to depend on how travel looks as well. Uh we may have to make adjustments. We're not sure yet. That's all uncertain. And those are the things that we have to watch for as provincial borders do open up, uh as international borders such as Canada, USA do open up uh as we move forward and, and, and certainly what restrictions are around those borders uh as we put the game back into place. I think another big one that we have to look at is the apprehension and uncertainty of those uh involved with programming. People are, are, are going to be apprehensive. They're gonna, they're gonna want to know that they're going to a safe environment, and that's really, really important. And, and uh that again goes back to the importance that, that, that we have in creating a solid uh framework uh that can be worked with and that can certainly put that message across uh as people return to the game because that's certainly, um that's certainly what they're going to look for, part of what they're going to look for. Uh with respect to insurance, uh we are, we are in the process of communicating with our insurance providers. Um we don't know what insurance is going to look like going forward, uh you know, not just hockey policies, but all the policies. Uh will there be exclusions for things like COVID and those types of situations? Uh that stuff we don't know yet, and, and that's stuff that, that we will continue to communicate with our insurers on. But the end of the day, uh the insurance program, and I'm sure many of you have heard this, becomes the safety net. And we must mitigate the risks in order to uh obviously uh reduce the, the, the need to fall back on insurance. And, and that's going to be so, so important going forward. It's always important, but it's more important as we move into, into our return-to-play um as, as, as we move into that uh, that scenario. Um and, and the policies, obviously, we're building for 2021, we're getting prepared. Uh so when the game does start, we are prepared uh with, with that insurance program uh as we move into, into uh the next playing, uh next playing season. Thanks very much, folks, and, and I'll pass it back over to, to BC.
Thanks very much, Todd. Really appreciate that. Um at this time, I'm just going to open it up. I'm not sure if there's any questions or just uh comments going back and forth in the chat function, but uh want to just check in with Sean Orr to see if there are anything specific to uh any of the presenters who have already addressed some issues on our agenda. Sean?
Uh thanks, Keegan. Yeah, there was one question just regarding the uh, the West Vancouver survey that we talked about the last meeting. Uh we had shared that result uh or that, that survey in the, the post-meeting um um information that was sent. Uh Tanya Foley has indicated she has a, a Google Doc set up where she can help with association. So anyone that needs the uh, the survey or looking for that information, please feel free to reach out to to Keegan uh or reach out to Tanya. She indicated that they have a online one that can be uh copied and used for association. So, so thank you to Tanya.
Yeah, it's easy just to reach out uh to our office via the info@BChockey.net email, and we can connect and, and do that link. Um just wanted to update quickly on um ongoing uh member engagement regarding annual congress. Uh most of you will have got the notice that the in-person annual congress has been canceled. At this time, with the regulations on social gatherings and the health and safety for everyone, the uh BC Hockey Board of Directors made the prudent decision to cancel the annual congress in-person version. Um we are working to offer as many of the items that occurred at the annual congress via virtual methods, including seminars such as these and the annual general meeting, the AGM portion online, including uh doing voting and resolutions. As we work through that, further information will be released uh when available. Um at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Jeremy Ainsworth, our Chief Programs Officer, uh for some comments. Jeremy?
Yeah, great. Thanks, Keegan. Um really appreciate everybody's participation on the call, whether you were a presenter, um a listener, or for those people sharing resources and ideas on the chat function. Um it's all very, very positive communication, and as we heard today, communication is a, is a key to this all. Just as a, a couple of closing comments, um we, we definitely want to extend our gratitude to the Hockey Canada leadership that's joined us on the call today. These are extremely busy people being torn in a variety of different areas, uh as you can imagine right now. Very meaningful that they've dedicated their time to share with us, so, so thank you. Um secondly, um we know that communications with our members is extremely important, and we know that that's a, a two-way process. A key next step for BC Hockey is going to be to listen. We understand you have challenges, um and we want to understand what those are. Um we need to be able to properly advocate. To do that, we need to listen. Your expertise, your feedback, and your input is critical to the process for return to play. Bill Green noted at the outset of the call, um uh we're setting up appropriate forums to further engage with our members, and we'll have details on that shortly. Um I want to conclude the call today just by saying that we hope that you, you found today's session informative. We really appreciate everybody's time. Stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any final word, Bill? Did you want to say anything to uh wrap up as we're just nearing our one hour allotted time?
Yeah, thanks, Keegan, and uh again, uh thanks very much to the um, the uh Hockey Canada group to join us. Todd, excellent presentation. Uh Michael, your, uh your words are inspiring to all of us. Tom and Scott uh as well, uh very meaningful to have you as part of this and uh it's a real pleasure to be able to uh get you guys together with our membership and uh show not only your insight, but uh some of the things that are going on in the uh, in the country uh at a national level. Um to all of our members, thanks very much for joining us today. This is uh, this is what we're going to see more of. The new normal will be a lot more communication with you. And again, I want to remind people that next Wednesday, we'll have a meeting specific to uh talking with our members and uh member associations, member uh district associations and what have you. So again, my thanks to everybody for attending and um stay safe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Bill. We'll have uh the information that Bill mentioned uh coming up to you shortly, along with uh the link to the Dropbox links will, will include uh this recording. Thank you all. Have a great day, and we'll talk to you next week.